March 15th meeting of the Act of Planning Board. And I even want to order up some lineup of procedures here that we've got to consider for Monarch Mountain Miners in Agnes.
Yeah, there is.
Let's do the minutes.
Are you going to do that first? I thought these guys might want to get home. We can make a brief.
We can go on the board. Anybody else want to?
We have a chance to look at the minutes.
Yeah.
You okay?
Mm-hmm. Come here, come on, she's seven minutes.
Second. Thank you. Follow us up here. Okay. So Monarch Mountain is here tonight for a revision to the existing conditional use. The existing conditional use had limited operation for a crushing operation there. Limited the times and times of the year and the times of the day. They're looking to expand that. Most of the board was out for a site walk today and saw the operation in motion. Tom Hammond with Civil Consultants is representing them tonight. And we're just doing a brief full review. And then if the board is ready, we can schedule a public hearing for the revision to the existing conditional use. Tom, yes, Tom?
Fine, maybe. Be very, very brief. Everybody that's here, not everybody that's here, but has been out there on site seeing what they're doing, I think you've listened to Mike give a very good explanation of what they would like to be able to do. We're requesting that the approval be amended to allow them to operate a crusher up there for 800 hours per year. Approximately six hours per day on the days that they operate and they usually start early in the morning and they get done early in the evening. Bureau Ordinance has a requirement for 50 decibels of property lines. And I think you could see out there tonight going through that, they were able to meet that requirement quite easily because the crusher is set in a hole up there with berms around it and it hits considerable distance away from any property lines. I think they could meet their requirement. I also think if you take a look at their operation, they are a good operator. You can see how they run that site even with two feet of snow on it, three feet of snow on it, it's clean operation. Saw how Mike brought you through and made sure you allowed it in the safety operations for it to go down for you. I think it's an industry you want and they need to have that crusher running to be able to utilize that, returning all that property if they would like to. Anticipate that before you get 40 years, they'll be here in town doing that. And, you know, basically that's it. Anything new guys would like to add to it?
Yes, sir. Do we have any notes, Tom, from you folks that pertain to these revisions? Already.
There's a narrative in there. It's a short narrative. I just touched on that. Two. It's three hours of operating. Six hours per day.
When would you think the hours of operation would be when you're running it?
From 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning until no later than 3:00.
I think we said nine to three. We said six hours. And I have a couple hours, we have a couple hours to do.
It takes us time in the morning, we get there, we got to service the machines, grease them, get them ready.
Yeah.
You know, at night to shut them down, you got to clean them off, it takes time, you know.
And really, we're just talking about the crusher, the operation. So you'd have stockpile time and organization and so looking for nine to three.
The crushing time.
Monday through Friday, no crushing on Saturday?
No.
The notes, Tom, are paper. One and two of this three pages here, is that right? What if you just decide nine to?
Nine to three is what they said.
Okay.
That's the crushing time. Not yet. They can have hours before and after setup and break down.
Tom, do I know where you're from?
Well, I'm from Civil Consultants in South Florida.
Yeah, I know you're from Topless.
I think I'm south Florida for a long time.
You mean?
You mean, yeah. When were you there?
Sigma Phi Epsilon.
From me?
Sigma Phi Epsilon.
I didn't see it. I knew, but you said, yes, I never.
Was it 67?
Uh, no, I should have gotten done in 66.
That's why I'm here.
So, yeah, Jimmy Talkins?
Yeah.
Jimmy was a good friend of mine. I grew up in Allen Falls.
Oh, yeah. It's known that one before, yes.
Probably Ed McCaffrey.
Ed McCaffrey, yeah.
Ed was my partner in some of the talks, you know. He got done about 20 years ago. He started that about 76.
There you go.
Small world, small world. But now I, now I see the man.
Yeah.
Oh, sure. Nash McGahn?
Yeah.
Do you remember that? Two, five years old, ten years old.
Twenty-five years.
You got tuition?
Okay, there's one member that can't vote. Now, who else have you worked with?
Well, that's funny.
Who's in, who's taking over the section?
So, how was the section?
The operation was, you couldn't even hear it at the office. They were halfway out, got it all gone.
I read, I read the textbook. And our conversation.
Tom, what was the days of the week?
Was registering.
My name is.
We could hear the brook and traffic loud, we couldn't not hear. And when we got up there.
Being within.
How close were we to the machinery, would you say?
When we first stopped with the big burn.
Up on the top.
No, we stopped to walk down near the farm. Maybe 50 feet away from the machine, maybe?
Fifty feet away and we didn't have to holler at each other to speak and the registers on this were not outrageous at all.
Nice.
Probably no higher than 70 decibels. And especially when the one truck was backing up and going beep, 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 those beeps like beeps do all of us. You hear, you're supposed to hear. You know, they were definitely within very reasonable ranges. And we did ask, you know, how many machines are you going to have running? One at a time, what we saw.
What you saw.
We saw, I call that one unit at a time.
Yeah, one unit.
One unit at a time.
So what are we quoting on, when we were at the outer periphery, when you first pulled in, what was the decibel level there?
Registered at 48.
Okay. Anybody on board with that figure then for the minutes of this meeting?
Yeah, I would have moved over to that. And I was picking up traffic and the wind actually was the higher reading on all of it until we got into the hole.
We'll call it 48 decibels at the property line. Fair estimation, I think.
So, actually, you said this before, Kendall, where is the?
The operation's right in this area here, I think.
Yes.
And will it always be right there?
Yes, the crushers, yes. We'll keep them in that hole.
If the hole gets a little bigger, you thinking maybe get the screener in there too?
Yeah. Yeah, but it's going to get considerably bigger to get that screener down on there, but fine.
Yeah, because when we were leaving, we could see the screen.
Crushing on the top three. Yeah. They've also purchased this parcel and this one as well. So, there are two of the butters and then this one, this one, and that one there is the opposite of ours. So we said last time, the nearest actual year-round dwelling is that upper camp.
2,300 feet of that, probably seasonal camps at 1,500 maybe.
Have you ever gotten any complaints from the Indian butters?
Not with these owners. Prior owners, we got a lot of inquiries.
Now, what about trucking in and out of there?
No different than what we're currently doing.
Okay.
When we go to public hearing on the 5th for this, can we have copies of the original notes?
Yeah, we'll get to the original conditions on the original conditional use.
As we, we're here tonight, the only two items that are being amended are agreed. Were they brought up in the discussion?
The crusher was allowed a few weeks in the spring and a few.
Fifteen days, I think, a year.
Yeah, and then in the fall, another cycle usually, that's standard, we usually do.
Yes, when crushers come along in technology, are they quieter than they used to be?
Yes. That is, and it is newer equipment they have up there, but they put a lot of time and effort into where it's placed and how it's being fed in the stockpile, all down in the berm. And where you couldn't make it, Leslie couldn't and Bob, we may be able to take another quick site visit out there sometime when you guys are available. And get you updated as well too if we need to.
Go ahead.
Crushers are looking to be here, I believe, to the end of the month. And then they're gone. Because right now they're leased equipment, they're rented equipment for a lot of time to crush, and then they go.
So eventually you'll have your own equipment.
If we did, yeah, if the permit changes, then we'll look at buying our own.
Okay, and it'll be similar to what's out there?
Yeah. Yes.
Maybe you could tell her what you were telling us about the noise control you were doing with the mats you were.
Oh, we have a screening plant that sits right above our crushing spread down under what we're doing. During the summertime, I have these big rubber mats, they're old belting, and I lay them across the steel chutes that come down. It really quiets the noise of the actual screener. During the winter time, the screening plant's a little louder because we take those chutes off because of the frost and the snow and it cakes on them and it jams up the material from sliding down the chutes. So, but as soon as summer comes back, I only put those on the chutes and it quiets our screening operation right down.
The screening operation is allowed. There's no restriction on screening from the original product. But yet they've come back in, I guess they've been working to keep that quiet. I think, actually, turncoats, old screener's sitting there, right?
Yeah.
We have one of them.
Can someone just help me, just to summarize the points that are being amended in or added in the, in front of the public hearing?
Yeah, I think the only difference they've asked for is to be able to crush five days a week, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Unless they want to change that to 8:00 to 3:00 or.
We'll go with 9:00.
And then I think they were going to offer it at about 60 decibels at the property line, so it's going to change.
It's going to stand 60?
Yeah.
Okay, so, any other discussion on this proposal?
Cut the 800 annual hours, so it's about half a week side of the year, point something each side of the year. If you did it straight, I mean, are you looking to have it just year-round, so you can just bring it in any time or? Yeah, pretty much at our convenience when we need to crush, so we can crush, you know. But right now, you see just the damage, know we got, you know, hard it is to try to do what we're doing, the effort, I mean, it's easier to crush during the summertime, you know, is what we're trying to get at.
Spring to fall, basically, yeah.
Yeah, you know.
With projectors, 2,000, 80 hours in a year, figuring 800 is plenty for what we're looking for.
And then, we're proposing an April 5th public hearing, please. Okay, bring this up. And a public hearing, and we can either vote, well, probably be most sensible to vote after that public hearing, time permits on that same day.
Right.
When we entered the pit, like on the left, like when we stopped and got the hard hats on, laughed the silver there, that's the area that's been revegetated?
Yes.
What are you guys' plans for that area this coming year?
Nothing.
Nothing.
It's up to DEP code for being revegetated, the grass and whatever's growing there. Or what is the plant material like this growing there now?
I'll wait some bushes popping up, grass growing. That's what's going on. Right now it's under, you would be able to see it, but.
Right, yeah, I was interested to look at that today. Interesting. You could see a couple golden rocks breaks down.
Is this, as far as you guys are concerned, you're not going to get into that area again that's been revegetated?
Um, not anytime in the near future, I don't see it.
Yeah, we think we have plenty of reserves where we're at.
Yeah.
We've been asking some of the gravel pits to try and get trees to re-grow in those areas, just because the original bigger vegetation was mostly woodland type. So, maybe, you know, maybe we'll come up with something that, you know, 20 by 20 spacing of native trees would be like red pines, white pines, red maples, things that are pretty hardy, maybe on the lower parts of the slope. I don't know if you guys would be.
Yeah, we'd be interested in that.
We'd be open to that option. Yeah.
Is there a plan, Tom, that shows before and after contours on this project?
I believe.
On the original place.
You show the file, my daughter.
Yeah, and nothing's going to change there. The only thing we're doing is allowing the crushing. In reality, that's halftime. If you looked at the 52 weeks, six hours a day, it's 1,800 hours and, oh, 1,600 hours, if I ask it by age, so, yeah, it's about halftime.
So, any more discussion on this project today? And you folks okay with the April 5?
No, April 5 is fine. April 5, please.
There are a lot of butters up at the top, as you remember, Tom. But I think, your reputation is probably right, before you guys did today, so I wouldn't anticipate any, just as an individual plan woman, I haven't heard of any complaints about this operation, so.
But are a hundred of your seasonal there on the lake?
I've done a lot, because we have.
A lot of them, yeah.
We're taking out the town act and we have 23 butters listed right here.
And the conditional use goes 500 feet.
Yeah. And I can practically put, take my, through the guy from Venice, Florida. Just a lot.
We get a lot of phone calls.
Yeah.
So, we, we try to make it a policy to take the public input and then render our own decision after considering the public's concerns and the race, so if this thing goes smoothly, as you folks have tried to make your operation as probably the nicest one you've ever seen, I don't anticipate any trouble on April 5.
Town fellas.
Will we answer these folks?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
And if you do want to do another tour for the people that haven't seen this last night, we'll set it up before the crusher leaves.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, the 500 foot line, brush, to pick up who's abiding and who isn't.
Yeah. So it's all along there except for the lake.
Yeah, that stretch right there.
Seven, eight, nine, maybe 12, 11 or 12.
Number one, I remember being very active in the original.
Um, she had her lawyers here with the first bit, you know, starts, so.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah.
What is, can you point with that map up? Can you just show us the other two abiding lots that these folks have.
They're coming off of Flat Ground Road, it's two and five, two and three.
Oh, Flat Ground, was that toward that?
Yeah. This is a spur off of Flat Ground right there.
Two or five.
We can't get.
So they lie two and three?
Yeah.
Flat Ground Road being the white line, we're able to ascend across there.
Yeah, this is actually the spur off of Flat Ground, Flat Ground stops down in here, I think.
I was going to say, can we even get there anymore?
You can drive right up to there.
Okay.
So it's like very long field, which is long too.
Flat Ground goes straight to where the bridge used to be and then the spur comes off of that.
Oh, I see.
And this is the cliffs that are in that area.
Where's the second one?
Lot numbers again, what?
Uh, two and three are the other two they own.
Oh, they currently own them.
Yes. Along with this other lot two, and lot one.
Have you been included as to what they're proposing after those plots as a future expansion?
I would think so. I mean, they said they have 40 years of mining out there available.
How many years?
Forty.
Forty.
So they currently own those now?
Yeah, because number two already has, they're already operating the number two.
Yeah, they got into this one a little bit. And that was the prior owner. So when they did their conditional use, they did it for one and two. They'd have to come back for conditional use for two and three.
What about eight? I'm looking at eight, because it starts at one, and then number eight.
It's three.
Oh, this one here? No.
No, this one.
Oh, number eight.
Long rectangle. So there's two of them. Right there, that's where I started. This one.
Oh. We were just talking to him.
Maybe Sam Pedro.
Yeah. He's talking to him.
Cell Tower we did is, I think right there. It was a few years ago, we did this cell tower out of sewers, something like there.
Who just bought 180 acres they were talking about? I don't know.
Doesn't sound familiar.
Yeah, Bob was speaking of a lot to the, I thought he said to the east.
Yeah, that's what I thought he said, to the east.
Eighty-nine acres or something.
Eighty-nine acres.
Did somebody just bought?
That one, maybe Prime Mission?
Uh, that's the one I have inquiries about. Of the government.
No, I was kind of ratted on his vote in the open.
Oh. Um, I haven't added very many inquiries on that one. No, that's the one right there. Uh, the only really good access, or the only good land is this little piece right there. That's the bone you have right there. This is nice and flat, this is all steep slopes and.
Is there, um, any of that this way, nears?
Uh, they're down this way. But when you look at this large parcel, the best land is right there. And it's all connected with this here.
Who's the governor of that?
General?
Yeah.
About the same thing. They did a timber harvest in there a few years ago. It's about all he's ever done.
So, our work here is done?
At least it's like this.
I do have a best possible location I'd like to save for your site walk prior to the next meeting, that works?
All right. Yeah. And the relocation, I told, we could do possibly on the 5th for the next meeting if the snow's gone. Because then you really need to look at the land a little bit more.
Where is it?
Fresh Road. Stone Wall Drive.
Fresh Road, no.
Where is that? Uh, Offoeshaw.
Oh.
Fresh Road.
Fresh.
Fresh. Fresh. Stone Wall Drive.
Yeah, yeah. Pretty stone walls, right?
So that's where you want to do the best possible location, site walk?
Yeah.
Before the next meeting?
Um, that was the request. Nobody's excited yet.
And what was that?
I don't know what time.
Do you have any info? I'm looking for shots and pictures.
Yeah, six o'clock.
Yeah, six. Garage, that's almost 70 feet away from the water. They will open to tear down and build in the similar location. I do have maybe a simple site plan or something.
Replace it with another garage or?
Correct.
Why is it, is it really necessary?
Yeah. All right.
Cameras, why?
I will be able to make that. We'll take pictures.
Maybe it's a complex thing.
I don't know. I don't know where.
The camera's wrong. I can update you later. How many sounds? I guess we can do that.
So six o'clock, April 5th, before the public hearing, site walk.
We'll update the three members that are here.
Will Bobby back on the 5?
I think so.
Unless there's another snowstorm and he can't fly in.
Oh. We only gave them a month of macho, so that's it.
He's walking back.
So, what is the other items for public hearing?
Before, before our zoning ordinances?
Yeah.
And then these guys. And then we'll have a relocation after the site walk.
Did you get a final voting from Steve Austin on that?
No.
No. So he'll be president here and probably the.
Oh, I'm sure. I think that's all done.
He's probably approved that for originally advocating.
He drafted it with Kenny.
Okay.
So it's all.
And just for our records, the chain of events for public hearings with the ADU.
ADU.
Help me out here, we have three or four.
One was subdivision.
That one's down.
Yeah, that one's down.
The 10,000 yards.
Bacon barn.
Bacon barn, okay. That was the.
That's a bacon barn. Accessory room.
Mineral.
Timber harvest.
Timber harvest, yeah.
So we know the ADU. Bacon barns and timber harvest.
Okay. So it's essentially four, five including Mark. Or five, including monach minerals, right? Is that right?
No, subdivision's already done.
Right, but you got, including?
Monach.
Monach, so you have four. No, I got ADU, I got gravel, I got bacon lot, and I got timber house.
Four zoning, and then a public hearing for?
Monach, yeah. You wanna do monach first?
I would think so.
Because they're the biggest draw.
Yeah.
So you wanna enumerate the others in the order that you wanna do in April one? Tim Havers too?
ADU.
Yeah.
Timber house, ADU.
Bacon lot.
Four, and gravel's five?
Yeah.
And gravel, it's called the mineral exploration, you know.
Is that what that's called?
Yeah. Exploration.
Exploration or extraction?
Extract, I mean, yeah, well, it's extraction, exploration, yeah. I mean, that's for the public hearing.
Is that anything happening again? I thought we were doing what's his name? Jay, I don't have one.
Yeah, this is what we're working on.
Just the campground here.
I haven't. I haven't had any contact with them since. Maybe he'll ask.
And I haven't heard anything back from the letting check.
The one said approved, or? Uh, they are working with an architect in the state fire marshal's office for permitting right now.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like they have some.
Is that the?
Any other business before, sir?
Are we a hundred percent happy with how this verbiage, for the very last thing of the minutes, the exception? We, that's from the real economy.
We voted on it in a perfect.
Oh, true, well, we, we voted on having proof of it, heck, true. We often vote in proof.
Can't help but laugh.
Right, no doubt.
But do we wanna, right, do they wanna?
What do you want us to add?
Tease it out somewhere, be accepted for the thousand cubic yards.
That's the mineral exploration, radical mineral exploration.
I think that's getting into.
Five. I was just curious, we should just, I mean, just put it out there, instead of moving, hey, why not use a hundred B? Or a new verb?
Because we're trying to clarify that this earth moving is earth moving activity. This is a gravel pit. Even though it's all underneath it, it seemed like it was easy. So when you look at it as it's sparring the one, two, three, and four, that's kind of earth moving. You wanna make sure this ten thousand yards isn't confused any longer with, I can have a gravel pit, I don't need a product.
Do you feel like that fully?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was between the territory and.
And the mineral exploration, okay, that's.
That's what that was, yeah.
I just don't recall that number being as big as a thousand cubic yards, because it was a hundred.
Exploring?
Mineral exploration.
I think under the exploring is ten, is a hundred in the definition. And then I think it contradicts itself in that section. So, which is odd that you need a permit to hand dig a hundred yards, but you don't for ten thousand. So the ten thousand, I think, according to the territory, he thinks it's just been misinterpreted since the creation. But I know the intention was how it's being interpreted now, but it's not written like that. Let's talk ahead.
Any other point to discuss tonight, or be very good? What we can do to get?